October 25th, we're starting at 7:01 PM. Could we have a roll call from the city clerk?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you. And will you go forward with the meeting format information or shall we do? Oh, no. Yes.
I'll make a few announcements about the meeting format tonight. This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 261, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button, or *9 if you're dialing in to raise your hand to request to speak, when the mayor calls upon that agenda item, or during oral communications for items not on the agenda. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute talk after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number of dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Those email public comments received by noon today were provided to council members and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be cancelled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you very much. And tonight, we will, for the first time, have our land acknowledgement read during our council meeting. "The city of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatash Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatash Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to mother earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatash Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to their ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatash Aloni peoples." And we will have a flag salute from council member O'Neil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a special presentation, which is a proclamation for Arbor Day. I understand that we have representatives from Tree City Pacifica present to accept the proclamation. Gail Shoemaker and Paul Toda. Hello. Hi, Gail. And Paul. There's Paul. All right, let me get my copy. And the city clerk will post the proclamation on the screen. Proclamation of the city of Pacifica in recognition and observance of Arbor Day and Tree City USA qualification event, November 13th, 2021. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times throughout the nation and the world.
Tree Pacifica, thank you for this proclamation.
And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, create jobs, and trees and their surrounding soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years, thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the city's climate action plan. And whereas trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses. And whereas the city takes pride in being environmentally sustainable in numerous practices and processes, and encourages residents to do the same. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sue Beckmeyer, mayor of the city of Pacifica, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the city of Pacifica. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations, then this 25th day of October, 2021. And do we have any comments from Gail or Paul tonight?
Yes, on behalf of Tree City Pacifica, I'll be speaking. Thank you for this proclamation. Even more, thank you for your support for our third Arbor Day celebration. As you know, to maintain our status as a Tree City USA member, we need to complete four tasks. Have an annual proclamation, which we just heard tonight. Hold an Arbor Day celebration, which we're holding November 13th. And act a strong heritage tree ordinance and have a budget to maintain existing trees. Tree City Pacifica is happy to organize Arbor Day, but we couldn't do it without our partnership with you. Everyone, from the city council to Public Works and beyond, has been generous with their time, knowledge, and skill. The city is donating 30 trees for Arbor Day, and the Public Works staff is providing essential expertise in labor. Also, sponsorship from the Pacifica Garden Club's Plant America grant is allowing the planting of 10 additional trees, including a COVID memorial grove. We look forward to our Arbor Day celebration at Fairmont Park and Rec Center, and we know it will be a success, thanks to you, as well as our legion of volunteers. Beyond this, thank you for all you are doing to care for Pacifica's existing trees, which beautify our city, improve property values, combat climate change by sequestering carbon. We applaud the Heritage Tree Ordinance Review Process and are grateful that you are listening to those in our community who are helping to fine tune those guidelines. We also want to thank you for recognizing how our policies regarding the preservation of heritage trees, the planting of new trees, and the maintenance of all trees in the city impact our environment, as well as the city's climate action plan, one that we hope will include a tree canopy goal of 30%. In other words, thank you for considering the big picture. How all our efforts are connected, and how they support each other. We continue to be part of the Tree City USA family because of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Paul, for those comments. We're looking forward to Arbor Day on the 13th. Gail, did you want to add anything?
No, Paul is speaking for Tree City Pacifica, but I just want to thank the council for your support and for that proclamation, and for coming to Arbor Day on November 13th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And city clerk coffee, or Mr. Montemeyer, do we have any public comment that we need to address on this topic?
No hands raised, Madam.
All right, very well. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing you on the 13th, if not before. All right, then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member requests, before the vote on the motion, to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. And I'm going to ask council members at this time if any council member wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. Seeing none, we will...
I move that we approve the consent agenda, as stated.
Second.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
We need public comment.
Before.
Oh, sorry, there is public comment.
It's okay. I was just, you know, thank you for that. Hold that motion. We'll get to public comment, and then we'll come back. Mr. Montemeyer, thank you.
Yes, we have one hand raised by Robert Hutchinson. And Robert. I'm sorry. Okay, you may now unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And I can comment on anything during this time?
Not on the agenda, though.
No, no, this is on, um, this is just on the consent.
Thank you, council members. Thank you. This is the consent agenda. Mr. Hutchinson, if you wish to comment on a consent item, please state the number of the item and make your comment. If it's a general public comment, we'll ask you to hold that until we call for general public comments in a few minutes.
Okay, unless the City Pacifica fee schedule is on the consent calendar, then I'll wait till public comment.
That is not, so we will wait for public comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. Okay, so that will close public comment on the consent calendar. Bring it back to council for a motion.
Wait.
We don't have a motion, right?
Tiger has his hand up.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that there's no confusion between fee schedule and dispersments. I just thought that might be a good point of clarification.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, we do have dispersments every, every month, or every consent item, so.
I consent.
Thanks. Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items one through eight.
My second.
So the motion is second.
Motion by councilmember Butterlos, and second by Mayor Pro Tem Beer. For the consent calendar, I'll start with a roll call vote with councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And consent calendar process five to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, and that does bring us to oral communications. And this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however, that during oral communications, the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 1, Sections, Section 2-1.118, any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council, may, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the discretion of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. Okay. So, let us hear from the public.
I remember we have three hands raised. Our first speaker is Dan, followed by Summer Lee. Dan, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me, council members?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that, um, I believe last November and December, that the Equalization Basin was certified completed, and the cease and desist order was lowered by the court based on the, uh, our Children's Earth lawsuit from 2011. This is the very first year we've had the Equalization Basin put into motion, and, um, quite frankly, it failed. You know, we had sewage overflows with feces and toilet paper on the streets at two different intersections. Um, I, every, four times since 2014, we've heard that this is a hundred-year flood. We heard it in 2014, we heard it in 2015, and we heard it twice in 2017, and I'm sure we're going to hear that this too was a hundred-year flood. The sewer system master, the wastewater master collection plan update, which I know you guys just passed, I wasn't able to get on, it has to include sussing out the problems with the equalization basin, why it failed now. I understand that some, some, the official stance is that the wastewater basin was absolutely full, and the equalization basin was absolutely full, and it overflowed from there. But it's my understanding when talking to wastewater staff that it was not. It's a continuing problem. It's been going on since the 80s here. You know, when it rains, the sewage overflows into the bottom of Lindemar, and we spent 21 million, 25 million, whatever we spent to fix it, it wasn't fixed. We need to get these contractors back in. We need to figure out what went wrong, and we need to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Summer Lee, followed by Suzanne Moore. Summer, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. Good evening, council members and staff. What a beautiful statement that was made to start the meeting. I know it helps me to be routinely reminded that mere centuries ago, colonizers arrived here and didn't see an existing civilization, but saw a land to be exploited. And now we can at least agree that there was indeed a subsistent civilization here that heralded stewardship of the land. Sadly, parts of our society still operate on the same system of colonization that decimated the Ramatash Aloni, that land is to be exploited for short-term gain, and that we have the tendency to ask what's good for ourselves individually before we consider what might be good for us collectively, as what might be best for ourselves individually. Eighteen months or more ago, when considering a new development in the Manor area, some community members did extensive research and pled with the city that there was not enough known about stormwater capacity, and that there were flooding issues in our neighborhood. It's great that in that short amount of time, the city is directing more resources to this problem. Yesterday's storm showed us why this is important. The storm that happened yesterday is not a 100-year event, because by dint of the fact that these events are happening several times in my lifetime, they are no longer 100-year events. And because you can't see me, you'll have to take my word that I'm not 100 years old. There are developments in the application pipeline that you are all spending time on, and you will deliberate on, and one even concerns the historic Aloni Trail. These are the kinds of decisions where the rubber hits the road, for making decisions about the future of our planet, and now for being in alignment with the statement that was made tonight in honor of caretaking principles. So I hope the statement of respecting those who survived from civilization that was here before us, and what lies in our history and in the ground under our feet in Pacifica is not lip service, because creating the appearance of caring, but doing the opposite is a perversion as bad as ignorance. Everyone here in this room cares about Pacifica. It's not easy to care either, as we all have different opinions on how we best can care for Pacifica. But we're a small town, relatively speaking, and I believe we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Our next hand raised is Suzanne Moore, followed by Christine Bowles. Suzanne, you may now mute yourself.
Thanks, Josh. Good evening, council and staff. Suzanne Moore, sitting board member of Healthcare for the Homeless and Farm Workers Program and member of Pacifica Housing for All. I speak for myself this evening. We learned in a case management session October 5th in the federal court of Judge Chapparia that the attorneys on both sides of the lawsuit challenging Pacifica's oversized vehicle ordinance are close to a settlement. Pacifica City Council had a closed session this last Friday, the 21st, and from this, I hope the city will be sharing information with our community soon. I want to thank city council and staff for their leadership at this time. Federal, state, and county focus has prioritized best practice and solution-based efforts on behalf of our unhoused, and funding has followed. Never before have we been in a position to truly accomplish a 75% reduction of our unsheltered homeless in three years. But that's the regional plan that our Board of Supervisors support. We now know that programs for our unhoused that provide rest, access to hygiene, and wraparound services really work to provide a path toward permanent housing. We have seen programs reduce the number of vehiculately housed on the street and find housing. We have seen an increase in stabilization of medical and physical health for the program participants. We have seen an increase in safety for program residents that also increase safety for the greater community, and we have seen reduction in illegal dumping of waste when access to hygiene was accessible. I also want to express gratitude to our unhoused community who pushed forward on their own behalf. Our city has not always been kind to you, and I know that you've experienced harassment threats and vandalism. I know many have been displaced twice, first from housing here, when the costs escalated, and again, when the oversized vehicle ordinance was initiated. I'm grateful for your courage to seek your legal rights and hopefully bring our city to a position of settlement. We all will benefit under clarification of the law. I look forward to the city announcement of the details of this settlement, and thank you all very, very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Carolyn. Christine, you may now mute yourself.
Good evening, council and staff. I wanted to start, uh, this is Christine Bowles. I wanted to start by thanking Public Works, and as well as the police and fire departments for their hard work with yesterday's storms. I know the work will continue, as there's a lot of cleaning up to do from the rivers of rain coming off our steep hillsides and flooding our lower-lying areas. To have such a huge record-setting rainfall, I was told 6.7 inches fell in Pacifica just yesterday in the midst of what scientists have called a dry La Nina year, and a mega drought is stunning. To me, it is yet another wake-up call that we as humans are not doing enough to fight climate change. Highway 1 was even flooded and closed for several hours, which is one of the few evacuation routes out of town for 40,000 residents. The storms of the winters of 1982 and 83 were not this bad, and yet the combination of storms and saturated hillsides caused 475 landslides in Pacifica that winter, and lives were lost. Our safety element and landslide maps in both the 1980 general plan and the 2014 draft general plan do not address the debris flow landslides that we are prone to, and so development projects continue to be approved without an understanding of the real risks we face. We need to do a lot more as a city to prepare for climate resiliency as our world continues to change, and as the basic safety of more and more Pacifica residents is threatened by sea level rise, coastal erosion, fires, and flooding. We cannot continue to plan using historic data as we are in uncharted territory. We must listen to the scientists, and even to the more outlined data and projections, as the melting of the polar ice caps and glaciers mean that there is less sunlight reflected, and we may be approaching an even more dire tipping point. State law requires the general plan safety element to be updated by January 1st, 2022 to address climate adaptation and resiliency strategies. And I look forward to reviewing that information later this year, as indicated by the new calendar on the plan Pacifica website. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And our final hand that's raised is from Carolyn. Carolyn, you may now mute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Hadameo. I'm a member of Pacifica Housing for All, and we have been following the lawsuit challenging the oversized vehicle ordinance. I've been very glad to see that the city has published a map and a list of approved parking places. This one simple act has been a big help to those forced to live in their motorhomes. I'm hoping now that the city will continue this goodwill by providing a safe parking program, as many other cities in the county have done. These programs are a proven way to support people as they work toward permanent housing. I'm grateful also to the people who stood up for their rights and brought the case forward. It was a very brave act, and I know this has been a difficult and stressful time for them. So definitely hoping for a very positive outcome from a permanent settlement of this case for all those folks that stood up for their rights, and for all our hope, for our whole community. Thank you. I'd also like to add that I was very pleased to see in the paper that the council has agreed to open the city council meetings with the land acknowledgement statement. It's a very beautiful statement, and I applaud you for those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And Madam, there's no more hands raised at this time.
Very well, then. We will close public comment and bring it back to council or council communications. And I see councilmember Big Six's hand is raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. First, huge, huge, huge thank you to city staff, Public Works, Pacifica PD, North Coast Fire Authority, our first responders. I don't know if any of you slept last night. Thank you for all the hard work that frankly I can't even imagine. So I look forward to hearing more about that from our city manager. As far as my regular economic development blip, I bought some books from Floris the other day. I'm regularly in the habit of ordering books through Floris, a Pacifica institution. The holidays are coming. You might consider going to Floris and supporting a local business. And speaking of which, I did attend in the audience the Economic Development Committee meeting. I was in attendance at the Let's Talk Housing meeting, and I was struck by how many of our communities showed up for that county-level event. I attended the One Shoreline Climate Change Risk and Resilience Meeting. Pacifica's own Chris Hunter was there, representing Don Horsey's office, and our Ryan Marquez was there, speaking about our B-Burb project. We clearly have a lot of work to do, but it was a really good meeting to see all the work that there is to do, and that we're apparently attempting to do it together. I attended the Emergency Preparedness Meeting. Mr. Breck Hitz, it was his last meeting, and thank you, Breck, for your service. Apparently, we are going to be the first county to use Zone Haven for tsunami preparedness. So traditionally, we use it to figure out the escape routes for fire. We're going to be using it for tsunami also, and we're a first county doing that. I learned about myturn.ca.gov for booster shot updates. And the next Emergency Preparedness Meeting is on the 17th of November. Last Friday night, I got to attend the screening of the Rivers End Documentary at the Firehouse. Very informative. Very informative. And my number one takeaway was that apparently it takes about a gallon of water to make one almond. And so if you have concerns about where water flows in California, you might consider eating a few fewer almonds. But it was a really good meeting about a really important issue in the Delta. And so I urge people to look up that documentary, River's End. I was at the City Democrats' meeting on Saturday. Kevin Mullen, our Assembly Speaker pro tem, was there. He reminded us never to assume anything, which is always good to be reminded of. And finally, on Saturday, I attended the opening of the Brisbane Library. I'm learning a lot about new libraries. I'm hoping we'll get to resume that conversation shortly. I was struck by how many families were there at the opening, how many delighted children with their families. There was art there. There was a laser cutter there. I didn't realize the kind of modern tech that's going into modern libraries, laser cutters and 3D printers. And again, it reaffirmed my notion that a modern library is a community meeting place that is sorely needed in this world in which social media seems to be rather antisocial by nature. So I think libraries are a good way to bring us together. The resources in a modern library are extraordinary. And again, I'm looking forward to resuming that conversation, hopefully sooner than later in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gaudelos?
Hey. I attended the City and County Association of Governments Board meetings. We don't have legislative meetings when the legislator's not meeting. We had a presentation by Sam Trans. We talked about trash reduction and stormwater. Kind of interesting for what we just went through. And I too would like to thank every person involved, the whole city, all the first responders, everyone for doing such a great job in a giant deluge that we had. I went to the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau mixer and enjoyed being in Filoli again, such a beautiful place to visit. Let's see, we did the interviews, but I did a League of California Cities Environmental Issues Group. That's people from all across the straight state, elected council members, and about each city's environmental issues. I attended the Democrats' meeting with Kevin Mullen after the opening of Rockaway Gifts and Sweets. I can't eat saltwater taffy or chocolate at the moment, but boy, it looked good. So if you're down in Rockaway, stop into the new store that's there. And I didn't get to go to the library because I had other things to do, but I did have that in my list, so I can say I didn't go to that one. But Kevin Mullen also had a meeting during the week. And that was good, too. So thank you. And if you can attend those, it's always good to listen to see what he has, what bills are passed and what's going on. It's really helpful for everyone. Thanks.
Oops. Thank you very much. Who's next? Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes, I went to some of the same meetings. I was at Soviet Evercraft with Kevin Mullen. I also, I'm pulling out my calendar to see, I also attended the SFO Roundtable, no news there. I attended the economic development. I was a little late because I was coming back from the San Mateo County Convention Visitors Bureau event. I also did the ribbon cutting with Subarlos in Rockaway and Wurridge. You know, it looks like they have, you know, there's more candy on order and everything there, so it's looking good. I also want to thank the entire city staff for all the work they did over this past weekend. I know Terranova was closed today because they still didn't have power. So we're still feeling the effects, but I wanted to, I know that the pumps were working double time. And I think Kevin's going to report that on a typical day, we do 6 million gallons of water. And I think it's over 17 million was done due to the staff working really hard, keeping the generator going, even though there was no power at the public work at the pump, yeah, the sewer treatment plant. And I just want to commend them for full utilization of the Eagleization Basin. It was full. And I want to thank them for the hard work they did keeping the pumps going. And also for police and fire, because I know they were challenged with flooding and wrecks. And I know the emergency network, fire dispatch, all it was was traffic accidents this weekend. So I wanted to thank all the staff that were able to, went the extra mile and extra, and extra work this weekend, putting that in when they might have been worried about their families and where their work. They did their duty, so I wanted to thank them for that. And done.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so I want to echo all of my council members to thank city staff so much for everything that they've done. And I'm really hoping that Kevin will touch on the EQ Basin, just because I would like to hear some details about that. So that would be really great if you could do that, Kevin, during your report out. Okay, where do I start? Let's see, on November 6th is the Aloney Portola Heritage Day hike presentation and hike. Please don't miss it. 9:30 at the community center. Very excited about it. We spoke about it at the open space meeting, and everyone there is also very excited about. So thank you for all of their support and their planning of this event. I'm really looking forward to being there. You know, it's a pretty decent hike, so I'm looking forward to that and hopefully making it to the top. It's a decent hike. And then I'm really looking forward to Arbor Day on November 13th. So thank you so much to Tree City USA, Tree City Pacifica, for being here tonight and for your response to the proclamation. We really appreciate your work a lot, and I didn't get to say that right after you guys were done. So please know that you're appreciated. I attended a meeting with Peninsula Clean Energy. They're looking at public facility solar resilience projects. They're looking at adding solar panels to the community centers. So we'll be talking about that sometime in a future agenda. I went to the Civic Center briefing, which was really good. I attended the Pacifica School Volunteers' meeting, and they're starting to reintegrate into the school slowly. And so that's really wonderful, that that kind of norm is going to be starting again, where we can get, get folks back into the classrooms, helping out. No, there's more. Oh, yes. Okay. So I also attended the Caltrans. We met with Caltrans. So our city met with Caltrans. It was a giant agenda, so I'll just sort of read over the topics that were discussed. So this is the second giant collaboration meeting that I've been to in a few weeks. The first one was with the GGNRA and the National Park Service, and this one was with Caltrans and our city staff. And they had so many people at this meeting, like you couldn't see all the squares, like they showed up. And so we covered signal updates, traffic safety improvements at Crespey and Fairway Crosswalks, litter and vegetation management, unsheltered encampment cleanups, manor overcrossing intersection improvements, the extension of southbound right turn from Hickey to Skyline, which, yeah, that was an interesting part. I had never, that never occurred to me, that we will be talking about that. The replacement of some highway signs, striping. We also talked about just vegetation management and then how they, that we all collaborate when there's encampments. So I know that was a really important topic for the folks in Sharp Park when there was a fire above Oceana. And so just know that there is a collaboration that addresses that along with our Pacifica Resource Center. It was a big meeting. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of action items coming from that. That's going to give us work for a long time. So it's really good to have that kind of collaboration coming from our agencies that do such fine work. I also got to participate in Palma Palooza on Saturday. So that was the annual fundraiser for the Pacifica Resource Center. And I got to deliver gifts to donors, and it was so fun. So I could like call them, say, I'm on my way to your house. Is it okay if I knock on your door? And so I got to see people and take pictures and be with them. And then unfortunately, during the storm, the resource center was flooded. So they cannot catch a break. Okay, it's first the fire, now it was flooded. So please continue to give, give generously. And I'm so glad that Adneed is not here tonight, because I told her to take a break. All right, that's all for me tonight.
All right. Thank you for all those updates.
I did want to say one more thing is Mary Beer and I had a meeting with Civica School District today just to discuss some items of mutual concern and was very productive. And there's actually something very informative we found out that we're going to be discussing with the city manager, who was also on the call, you know. It was a very good meeting, and I want to thank our colleagues on the school board for being a part of it and willing to chat and stuff. So hopefully this works.
Yeah, a lot of collaboration going on.
Yes.
Very good. Thanks so much for that update. And Subarlos, back to you.
Collaboration again. Flood, sea level rise, resiliency, which is also known as One Shoreline. I went to their meeting today, so how quickly I forget. And they are collaborating with the entire county. Most of those creeks that have flooded in the past, like in Redwood City, none of them flooded enough so that they caused any damage. So that's kudos to all the people who've been working on all of those creeks. And there are some major events. Burlingame, a lot of the sea level rise items are on the Bayside. There is a small coastside erosion project. It goes, it's by Surfers Beach and Princeton that they're going to be working on. Nothing up here yet, but they are going to be working at least a little bit on the coast. So thank you again.
Okay, thanks. I attended a few of the same meetings as my co-council members, not as many, however. I had some trainings at work and things going on, work for my day job. So, but I did attend the One Shoreline presentation, and our own Mr. Ryan Marquez presented for Pacifica, which we appreciate very much. I found it really enlightening and interesting to, and I know I appreciate this council member Gaudelos, how you were there, how it was really focused on the coast side, right? And so we, except for a tiny bit, did hear Bayside a little bit because of the Harbor District presenting. And I forget that it's not just the harbor that we know down our south coast. It's also the harbor over by, kind of like by Candlestick or whatever over there. And so it's very enlightening to hear about and see and really to have visual confirmation of what we say all the time, and which is so true, that not every sea level rise issue in each community is the same. We all have different terrain. We have different amount of build-out. We have different challenges. And what I appreciate is that there's this concerted effort, collaborative effort, to address all of that together under one umbrella, under One Shoreline. And I remember thinking, you know, initially, oh, well, really, it's kind of two shorelines because we have the Bay Shoreline. And Councilmember Gaudelos and I were joking about that, kind of joking a little bit. But then, as we spoke about it, I realized, well, really, when you think of the Bay Shoreline and the fact that the Golden Gate opens, right? And the bay, you know, there's the transfer between the Pacific Ocean and the bay. It is one shoreline, and it's significant. So hearing some details again from Assembly Pro Tem Kevin Mullen at the Democrats' meeting, he pointed out that I think it was $234 billion, I can't even remember the number, of potential property impact in his district. It's the highest amount in the state of California. So we really appreciate his leadership and his support, not only for our Pacifica projects on our, you know, near the pier, in our shoreline protection projects there, but also his leadership for all of our region. So that is, that's front and center, always keeping that in mind. The Democrats' meeting was very enlightening. Lots of good information about the status of various bills that were signed and not signed and deferring into next year and that kind of thing. So always useful to attend those meetings. And we do have our own supervisor, Don Horsey, who will be speaking at the next Pacifica Democrats' meeting on the 20th of November. So if you're interested in that, and they will not be meeting in December. There was a presentation at the Economic Development Committee. Two big presentations, well, really three. One on lots of work that's being done about continuing the efforts that were really started by Pacifica, I must say, before I was on council, I think. Maybe we finished it, but it started before I was here around our single-use plastics ordinance and further ordinances that are being promoted and adopted in the county around use of single-use items in restaurants when there is table service. And so a lot of details that are being worked out around those. So I'm looking forward to delving more deeply into that. I was a little interested to learn that Pacifica isn't in the top 50% or maybe even 75% of the county in adopting those ordinances. So I think there may be some work for us to look into on that. Don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but just need to look into it more to know more about it. We also had a really wonderful presentation by our Chief Fiscal Sustainability Officer, Yulia Carter. That was very helpful and enlightening to Economic Development Committee members about the way that income flows to the city through various sources. And of course, Economic Development Committee is really thinking a lot about sales tax and temporary occupancy tax and these kinds of things that are visitor-serving related. But it was the question that actually came up from one of the committee members. They wanted to understand the bigger picture of how that all came together. And it was a very thorough presentation, and I appreciated it a lot. So I recommend council members to take a look at it. It's just another layer of depth of understanding, is how I felt. I feel like I learned a lot from our former Assistant City Manager, Lorenzo Hines. And this is just, it brought another layer of information to me, so I found that really beneficial. I'm sure the city manager will have some words to say, but I'm going to go ahead and say my words right now about the departure of two very significant members of our city staff. And that must be why Mayor Protem has her hand up. So I'm going to give us all a chance to say some nice words. Not because they're nice words, but because these individuals have given so much to our city. And we are very happy for them moving on to new positions in their professional careers. However, I would be lying if I said I was, you know, if I didn't acknowledge how much of a loss I feel about us not having these folks on city staff any longer. And I'm talking about Lewis Sun and Ray Curtilla. Both of them in the same department, Department of Public Works. Lewis Sun has been Deputy Director of Waste Water Treatment for a very long time and has been so helpful to me in learning, learning, learning as we've gone through so many different aspects of wastewater treatment. And then Ray, who has just been such a contributor and has always just had the can-do attitude. And it's really going to be hard to imagine not seeing them and not experiencing them being part of staff. So if any other council members have things to say, please, please go ahead. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you so much. I like how you described Ray. I think that's how I would describe him, too. So thank you, Ray, so much for all of your service to our city. And Louis, so Louis was one of the first people, city staff, who really took the time and patience with me to help me learn when I first started on council. And he made me feel comfortable and informed. And yeah, I just always, always felt really at home with you, Louis. And I'm really going to miss you. And I'm very happy for you. And I hope that you stay in touch. Just know that your kindness really meant a lot to me. So thank you so much for that.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll echo the sentiments just spoken. I didn't realize that Ray had left, so that one was news to me just now. So ouch. But congratulations, as deeply sorry as I am to see you go. And Louis, I, you know, back when we had city council meetings in person and I got to be able to speak to staff as just as a member of the community and just as a member of the community having questions and being able to receive those answers in a very kind fashion from somebody who is very knowledgeable in his field. And that was the beginning of years of learning from him. So again, I'm happy to hear that he is doing well and moving on and a bit saddened for what we get to lose from our community, though I have no doubt that we get to embrace a new member into our community who will serve us just fine. So thank you and best, best wishes to you, Louis and Ray.
Thank you. Councilmember Vadois?
First, I guess I've seen Ray for a long time because we always called him Little Ray. After his dad's Ray too, or his dad was Ray. And he's not a little guy. But I appreciate everything you've done for the city and I hope that you have great endeavors wherever you are. Louis, I feel like I know you so well. And I will totally miss you, your kind consideration for people. The things I remember the most were like the Bellboa meetings when people were screaming and yelling and you were just so calm and accommodating to everybody and listen to everybody. You have that soft-spoken way of making people feel so comfortable. And I really am going to miss that. And thank you. And I hope that you do just wonderful things where you're going. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill?
There isn't much left to say, so I would just echo everything that my four other council members said and and thank you both for the service you did and what is a tough job. And just like this weekend, you know, with all the rains we had, it has its ebbs and its flows, right? So but thank you for handling all those flows and, and all you've done for us and giving us and helping us actually have what is considered one of the more modern plants on the peninsula in terms of its treatment. Other cities are still trying to meet the standards that we've been meeting for years. And the Equalization Basin was a part of that, you know, endeavor and everything. And I just wanted to say thank you to Louis for helping us out with that. So good luck in your new career. And that's that.
Thanks so much. And now the city manager, Kevin Woodhouse, with a staff report, Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Pro Tem Beer and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. And thank you for those kind words to those two great employees that will be missed. One undertaking a lifestyle change to work on bridges in Public Works in Eastern Oregon or Washington, I forget which it is. And, and the other just moving over to become Public Works Director in Foster City. So great promotions for both of them. So thank you again for making those kind comments. With your permission, what, what I really want to do is focus on some of the details about our response and preparations for and response to this major storm event. And if you bear with me, I want to read from some notes because there's a lot of detail in here. But I, I think it warrants a few minutes to cover because it, it really shows the degree of danger and, and commitment that, that the city undertakes in these types of events. And this was a major event. I'm hoping that I only have to give this kind of summary once every hundred years because that's what this storm approximated, if not was. In Pacifica, recorded at the Blair Creek Water Recycling Plant was six inches of rain. Elsewhere, I know it ranged from, you know, four to six. And in the North Bay areas, there were areas that received up to eight inches of rain in Marin and elsewhere. So this was a significant hundred-year storm. And what I, what I'd like to do is I'll begin with really the responding agency departments here, Fire, Police and Public Works. And I'd like to begin with North County Fire. They responded to 63 incidents, the majority of those between 2:00 PM and 10:00 PM yesterday. That's a 50% increase over normal responses, you know, during, during that time. And those incidents consisted of 19 power lines down, seven traffic accidents, six, six downed trees or limbs and 31 other types of responses. In terms of Pacifica Police Department, both North County Fire and the PD really anticipated, staffed up, overlapped, overlapped shifts. So we had a lot of resources available. And on the PD front, they, of course, are providing extra coverage and responding to power outages at intersections or traffic control as necessary, traffic control near downed power lines or debris in the road. There were 10 reported traffic collisions. However, only two of those involved injuries and they were minor injuries. So I think we can be very thankful for that because in this significant storm, some, there could have been some major traffic collisions. There were 180 calls for service to the Pacifica Police Department during that time. As everyone knows, one of the major incidents was the closure of Highway One at Manor due to flooding. And, you know, there was flood, significant flooding all around the Bay Area and the freeways. So Caltrans is obviously very ETA on these, response to these was, you know, not going to be determinate. So the police officers at the Manor flooding sought out the clogged drain and cleared it. And within three hours, I believe it was, that, that flooding was, was clear. So thanks to the officers that, that did that wet work. They also responded to the potential of another threatening closure due to flooding on northbound 35 north of Shark Park Road, I believe it was. And there, again, they located the clogged drain and cleared it and prevented that from, that route from having to be closed. They also, of course, you know, are with Fire, are, are very active on communications, in constant communication with the San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management about closures and resources and things that are happening. And many saw, the public hopefully saw, and I encourage everyone to be signed up for Connect with, I mean, not Connect with Pacifica, to SMC Alert. If, this is the exact time type of incident. You want to be receiving notices on SMC Alert on your phone so you know what's happening. And so the PD was putting out SMC Alert and other social media posts. So very active on social media to disseminate the essential information during that time. So let me turn now to the two parts of Public Works' response. Wastewater on the, on the one hand, both the plant and collections and our field services activities that were occurring. So, so Public Works, between both wastewater and field services, had 27 staff members working around the clock during the weekend to minimize storm impacts in advance and then during the storm to handle and work on them. And that and then in addition to those 27 senior management staff who assisted with the efforts. So, so first, let me talk about wastewater. As Councilmember O'Neill mentioned, the wastewater plant normal, on a normal day, processes four million gallons per day. It processed 17 million gallons yesterday. And they worked throughout the night to keep the plant and the pump stations. The pump stations are a critical element of the system with generators fueled during the power outages, as was mentioned. So very important step there. In addition, they managed and responded to resident sewer complaints due to flooding or incidents that were happening at houses. And let me talk about the Equalization Basin. I cannot even imagine what this incident would have looked like if we didn't have an excellently functioning Equalization Basin that's been completed. 2.1 million gallon capacity in that basin. It performed well, preventing major sanitary sewer overflows as it's designed to. But as was mentioned, it reached capacity on Sunday night. And that required the Lindemar Pump Station, the, the effluent goes from the Equalization Basin to the Lindemar Pump Station and over a hill to the plant for treatment. That required the Lindemar Pump Station to actually have to bypass some of the flow into Lindemar Beach Outflow Pipe. And as this has happened in the past with large storm events. And I should mention on this that numerous cities, and I didn't tally up how many from around the Bay Area, also had significant bypass events just because of the sheer volume of the, of the water. But as a follow-up, and it's part of the protocol and with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, due to the impact of the bypass, Lindemar Beach has been closed. A press release was sent out today about that with signs up there. And we are testing the water bacteria levels at the beach. And what the requirement is, is that we keep the beach closed for three days and provide testing of the water during that, that timeframe until it's determined that it's, it's safe to open. There were minor manhole surcharging that was observed during the peak of the storm mainly, mainly in the, in the Lindemar area. And again, just to reiterate that the past city worked to upgrading the city's sewer infrastructure, including the EQ Basin, addressing the infiltration and inflow issues through upgrades to the sewer collection pipes and private resident laterals, really, really paid off in assisting the city in minimizing impacts of this, this event. Can't imagine what the world hurt we'd be in right now if, if we hadn't been doing that, that proactive work. So bearing with me, let me turn to, last but not least, is Public Works Field Services, which were also critical during, during this response. So one of the things that Field Services does is well in advance of the storm season to be doing regular work, clearing creeks, cleaning creek channels and inlets of debris, which will help minimize flooding during a storm. And then during the storm, Field Services responded to over 50 resident calls, mostly related to flooding of roadways or private properties, downed trees, limbs and overflowing creeks and waterways. They also assisted in managing the ANZA pump station and keeping the generator running there. And continued today, importantly, the cleanup is intense. And so lots of call response and cleanup today. Again, regarding fallen branches, broken storm inlets, missing pavement from storm damage, mud and debris clearing and private property drainage issues. So immense amount of work went, went into this. All the council members really, you know, thank staff and I appreciate that. And I thank staff as, as well. And, and I, you know, also just to thank the public for doing safe things during, during the storm mostly. And, and it's really, I mean, it was intense. Everyone knows that. But from our perspective and from city staff's perspective, there's such a commitment in doing this dangerous, dangerous work. But it's, it's why these employees are dedicated. They love this type of service. And so we're just happy that, that we got through it the, the way we did. And I'll stop there. I've taken enough time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. For all the updates, we all know it was a big storm. And it sounds like more rain coming this week. So really you need to remain vigilant. All right. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We have one, two, three consideration items. Council members, are we ready to forge ahead onto our Civic Center Camp Campus Facilities Schematic Design Development update? Or do we need a little break? Ready, Roll? All right, very well. Better description, sorry. I know we have Don Marcus from Group Four presenting tonight. And this is item nine on our agenda. The recommended action is to receive a presentation regarding the Civic Center Campus Facilities Project for an update on the schematic design development phase and provide comments on site design, building design and budget. Our staff contact on this and presenting tonight is Sam Bautista, the Deputy Director of Public Works. Lisa Peterson is here tonight, Director of Public Works. And I saw Don Marcus is in the audience, so I guess she's presenting as well? Yes? Good. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council Members. Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works. The item before you is a presentation regarding the Civic Center Campus Facilities Project to update you on the schematic design development phase and for council to provide comments on the site design, building design and budget. I just wanted to give you a brief description on the ongoing project, which builds on and continues the work established in the 2020 Pacifica Civic Facilities Study. The Civic Center Campus Facilities Project will renovate City Hall located at 170 Santa Maria Avenue and renovate the planning, parks, beaches and recreation building located at 1800 and 1810 Francis T. Boulevard. The project will demolish the old Police Department Building located at the rear of City Hall and will upgrade the site circulation and landscaping to create a Civic Center Campus Field. In addition, the project includes the master planning of the Civic Center Campus to include the Salata Parking Lot. The conceptual design began in October 2020 and culminated in a presentation to the City Council on April 26, 2021. At that time, City Council accepted the conceptual design and funding strategy. The project is, the project proceeded to the schematic design development phase in July 2021. And now Don Marcus and the Group Four team will provide the City Council with an update for an update of the work effort since the April presentation. So with that, the floor is Don's.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sam. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Really pleased to be presenting to you the update for the Civic Center Project tonight. Next slide, please. We will give you an update on our work plan, the project schedule, an update on the project estimate, as well as review the design updates with you, including the site plan, the floor plan, the exterior design, material palette and summarize the next steps. As Sam mentioned, the recommended action tonight is for you to receive this presentation on the Civic Center Campus update for the schematic design, design development phase and for you to provide your comments on the site design, the interior and exterior building design, as well as the project estimate. Next slide. We have been busy and staff has been busy working on the project since we started in July. After we presented to you last April, we have really made After we presented to you last April, we have really made great headway with schematic design and design development over the last four months. Actually have submitted to the Planning Department our planning submittal and are looking at going to the Planning Commission November fifteenth. All leading up to this has been bi-monthly project management team meetings with our design team and city staff to keep the project moving as quickly as we possibly can. This is also included technical meetings. The technical meetings included the Building Department, the Planning Department, Public Safety, as well as Fire. So we've had two of those code meetings. We've also had an integrated design workshop where we had our cost estimator and all of our project engineers review with city staff all of the different proposed systems and all of the details for the project. Stakeholder meetings have included many staff workshops and I'll review those on the next slide. So we could probably just jump there for the summary of our engagement. For staff, we've had two staff workshops, including August twenty fifth and October fourteenth, as well as two working group sessions on our service counter and mailroom design. Community engagement to date has been our neighbors meeting on October thirteenth. And there is online an FAQ available to the community to look at any frequently asked questions and get answers. Tonight's City Council meeting, which will then be followed by the Planning Commission presentation on November fifteenth. Next slide. The update on the project estimate, we have just gotten back summarized on the next slide is the April estimate. But we did just get back our current estimate, wanted to give you an update on what our current project estimate is. But before we did that, wanted to summarize the direction we received last April, which included a base option for the project that summarized here on the left side, which was the renovation of the P and P building and improvements to City Hall, which included the new stair and elevator tower for accessibility. You also directed us to include the three add alternates that we summarized here, which was full interior and exterior renovation of City Hall, as well as full site improvements to the Civic Center site. That project budget that we presented in April was eleven point four nine million. And that was all hard costs, soft costs, escalation contingencies, F F D E, permits, fees, total project cost. On the next slide, we are summarizing what our current project budget is, which is just slightly higher than what we shared with you in April. The team's been working really hard. The city's been working really hard reviewing our information, trying to contain cost. And summarized here is the full scope of work, which had been the base project back in April, as well as our alternates one, two and three. As we're looking on the next slide, you'll see that we do understand the project budget that the city would like for this project is ten million dollars. And so ways that we're looking at trying to align this budget is by creating alternates. These are different alternates than what we had in April. These alternates have been identified such that they could be phased over time or come back and done at a later date when additional funding may be needed. There's a lot of variables in our project estimate right now. The variables include escalation, contingency, budgets and allowances for unknown costs at this time. And we'll continue to do the value engineering and the hard work to make sure that options are available to city at bid time to move ahead as their project budget has been established. Next slide. So now for the design update, we'll walk through the site plan, look at the floor plans and look at the exterior design of the building as well as the material palette. As Sam summarized, looking at the Civic Center site, we are looking at full renovation of the P and P building as well as City Hall. In addition to City Hall, we are looking at adding an addition to it, which includes a stair and an elevator for accessibility. We are looking at demolishing the PD to improve site circulation and reduce the hardscape on the site. And on the site, we're looking at providing new parking, hardscape, landscape, as well as a parklet. On the next slide, you'll see the proposed site plan, which is been developed and refined from the site plan that you saw back in April, working closely with S W A or landscape architect to really bring an elegance to the site, a simplification of the site and creates more green space on the site. So we have Francisco Boulevard on the right. We have Santa Maria on the top and Solata on the bottom. The P and P building, as you can see in the corner, City Hall with its new addition and the Little Brown Church are shown in white. One of the first things that we've done is eliminate the car access off of Santa Maria. So in order to get to, into the civic campus, the new entry drive is off of Francisco and it's lined by an LA of trees as well as parallel parking. It has a cross access, which is where our parklet and our major pedestrian connector goes through the site. In addition, at the parklet, there is a grade change from the P and P building to the City Hall. And we've accommodated that by the use of the stadium seating between the buildings. A really nice place for informal gathering, formal gathering, breaks for staff or for use by the community, evenings or on weekends. As you go further down by the Little Brown Church, there is another gathering space that we've created outside the Little Brown Church on the, what I'll call the west side. And this is really just an informal breakout area, place for receptions, a place to pause for the neighbors, something that could be used for events at the civic campus, but another opportunity to create additional outdoor space. From Santa Maria, as we go down on the west side of City Hall, we have maintained the utilities located there, but again, have eliminated the car access there. We have a new trash enclosure. We have a generator, which we would like to replace, but currently is still being carried as an alternate. And then we have storage spaces as well as a transformer. The parking on the site, as you can see, is parallel parking as you come in off of Francisco. We have van accessible spaces indicated with the little blue boxes, as well as electric vehicle charging stations along the backside. We do also have stormwater detention and treatment areas shown in that light green area, just kind of where the old police station was on the property line between the neighbor, as well as behind the new gathering space outside the Little Brown Church on the west side. As we go to the next slide. As Sam mentioned, part of our master planning work for this project was to include the Solata Lot as kind of the additional parking area for City Hall. This is the designated parking in addition to what's on the Civic Center site. This parking is also associated with the Civic Center. And so really worked with the civil engineer and the landscape engine, landscape architect to simplify the circulation and to really clean it up. So we actually have two-way access to the new parking area and it perpendicular parking. And then we have created a space, as you can see, for the future location of the railcar. In discussion with council of the different options for the site, where the railcar could be located back in April, it was our understanding that this was the preferred location, had minimal impact on parking spaces and really maximized the opportunity for visibility, accessibility and for that railcar to become a real amenity, kind of an extension of what the Little Brown Church is along Francisco Avenue there. As, and again, I do want to point out though, that the Solata Lot improvements are not included in the project budget at this time. And so just this master planning work is where we'll be taking this part of the project to at this time. On the next slide, looking at the landscaping. As I mentioned, a new LA of trees is being created at the new entry drive off Francisco to the Civic Center. Those are being proposed to be pear trees, as well as kind of building off the coast live oaks that are already on the site. As you look at the little key plan we have on the right, the darker colored trees in the circles are the oak and the pear trees are the light green trees that circle the LA. Medium height shrubs include the manzanita and the rosemary. As we go to the next slide, we have low shrubs, which is the coffee berry, the coyote brush located around the building. Very drought tolerant, low maintenance, but really appropriate in the coastal climate that we have. And then in order to bring some color and to really create a nice accent for the pedestrian areas, we're using the lavender, the black sage and the blue sage, as you can see around the pedestrian pass, as well as the major accesses or axes on the site. And then in the stormwater treatment areas that I mentioned, they're shown on that bottom key plan here, we'll be using the grasses. On the next slide, just wanted to summarize the sustainable design elements for you that are being used on the site and in the buildings. The first one is to point out that both of these buildings are existing buildings and we're reusing them. So that really is one of the most effective ways of designing sustainably is to have reuse be one of your first options. We're using daylight harvesting, building materials with recycled content that are locally sourced, sustainably made and harvested, as well as having low VOCs, low flow faucets and fixtures. Mechanical systems will all be upgraded and will be to current code and meet Title twenty four Energy Efficiency Guidelines. LED lighting, as well as on the P and P building, it will be PV ready, photovoltaic ready for future solar panels. On the site, we have the stormwater treatment areas that I pointed out to you. The landscaping is native, drought tolerant and climate appropriate. The EV charging stations, bicycle racks, as well as the, sorry, I can't see the last thing on that slide right there. So I don't know why our slides, I don't know if the rest of the screens are in align, but mine's just slightly unaligned there. Okay, so we can just go on to the next slide. Going into the buildings now, looking at the floor plans, we have the City Hall program and the P and P building for the City Hall. In addition to the lobby and the service counter, we have the HR department, the IT department, city manager, city clerk and the finance. We have conference rooms, lactation room that can second as a conference room, but is code required, restrooms and support spaces. In the P and P building, we have lobby service counters. And then we have the planning and building department, as well as Public Works, conference rooms, collaboration spaces and kind of the main support spaces for the Civic Center will be here with the mailroom and the break room, as well as the additional restrooms and support spaces for that building. On the next slide, we have the floor plans for City Hall. On the left is the first floor plan, on the right is the second floor plan. As we start with the first floor plan, you can see that Santa Maria would be at the top and the existing entry to City Hall is shown on the top of the slide here. That'll now be a ceremonial entrance. We're moving the main entry to this building to the internal side of the civic campus and with the addition of the stair and the elevator that you can see here where we have the red arrow. If you were visiting City Hall, you would come into the lobby, you would be able to see up to the second floor, have an open stair, look at the elevator and easily move up to the second floor lobby and service counter. But on the first floor, which is not publicly accessible, we do have HR and IT conference rooms, collaboration space, a small kitchenette and other support spaces. As you move up to the second floor, we have the service counter, restrooms. And then really playing off the symmetry of the building, we've got in the four corners of the building, we have enclosed offices. Along the sides of either the west and the east side, we have collaboration and conference rooms. And then we have the open office space in the middle, providing lots of flexibility for future changes. And then using what is currently your city clerk's office as a light well and ancillary use or storage, opening that space up so that it'll eliminate, illuminate and provide daylighting down to the open office space. As we go to the P and P building, we have Francisco Avenue on the right, Santa Maria on the top. As you come in off either entry off of Francisco or the new entry drive, we have a row of conference rooms. These are either one conference room on the right and either two conference room, conference rooms on the left or they could actually be opened up and adjoined to create a larger room. All are accessible for after hours use with the restroom off the lobby. Then we have open office space to support the service counter. Then we have other support spaces like mailroom, the break room, our closed offices along Francisco and additional open office space at the back of the P and P building. Then as we move to the exterior of the building, we really took our cue and our direction from council's input when we met with you last April. Your preference for design option one for the P and P building and then for the addition to City Hall, to look at how the glazing came and gently touched the historical building, but then also kind of prompted us to look at how we might be able to provide corner glazing in order to provide more transparency to the stair. And so we took that direction, as you can see on the next slide, have further refined the P and P building to what you see here, really building off the original concept options, but refining them using three different materials on the P and P building to create kind of a very rich palette, create difference and variations in the massing to create a little bit stronger civic presence and to create a rhythm to the building. So we have a kind of a brow that goes around the tops of the windows and creates this strong connectivity, a horizontal line to tie the massing together. We're using stucco, as you can see on the right. And then the nice warm wood that you see behind our signage where it says Pacific as Civic Center is our phenolic wood panels, which are very durable, have a nice warm wood look, but very easily maintainable and appropriate for the coastal climate. And then we're using metal panels on the vertical tower that kind of comes out and anchors the building. Looking down the site, immediately visible to you is the entry to City Hall with the new addition at the back of the building. And you can see how the landscaping really creates a nice gateway and accents the nice paving as you come into the new Civic Center site. On the next slide, we move a little bit more internal to the site and are looking at the P and P building on the right, City Hall on the left, the new two-story addition to City Hall, where you can see at the transparent corner and you can see the open stair as it goes up and wraps around the new elevator. Very gentle connection to the historical building, kind of referential and stepping back and not trying to compete with the historic building with our kind of our storefront glaze connection that happens just under the eve of the renovated City Hall building. Looking at our parklet, you can see how the landscaping kind of draws you through the site, the stadium seating that comes down from the P and P building to accommodate that grade change and just the opportunity to integrate the pedestrians and focus on the pedestrian experience for the site. On the next slide, we have moved further kind of standing about where the existing police department is, looking back at the lobby that would take you into the City Hall, as well as the vertical element, which would identify the entry down on the P and P building and looking back at how the parklet kind of starts to cross through the site. cross through the site and make that connection across behind the historic little brown church and over to the Salada lot. On the next slide. Moving out to Francisco Avenue, we have the opportunity to use another vertical element to give a stronger civic presence on Francisco and to announce the building. Using the phenolic wood panels as you come down Santa Maria to change the scale of the material and respond to the more residential and the historic city hall, which is directly adjacent to it. And if we go to the next slide, we'll move down Santa Maria. Look at the renovated city hall building, which will be bringing back the original redwood siding refurbished, painted with a very durable painting system. And you can see how the nice warm palette of the site is kind of transformed with the historical city hall being a nice neighbor to the residences to the right, then kind of becoming more civic if we go to the renovated P and P building on the left. And again, this this entry will be a ceremonial entry at this point. With the public being directed to the other side of the building and the other side of the P and P building. Kind of trying to keep the civic center traffic off of the residential streets. On the next slide. Is our summary of our exterior finishes, showing you the integrally colored stucco. A nice warm dark brown window trim will be used on both buildings. And then our phenolic wood look panels shown in a nice warm honey color. And then the metal panels, which are on the vertical elements of the P and P building. One of the comments we've heard is that's a really nice kind of gesture that ties the historical little brown church in with the color palette nicely kind of creating kind of the whole civic palette, if you will, for the civic center. And on the bottom left is the painted wood that would be used on the city hall building. And that has been historically researched to try and replicate what their building had been painted in its original. Color. And with that, I think I get to summarize what we expect our next steps to be. Which would be good to receive your comments tonight. And on the next slide, summarizing our project schedule. So looking at completing schematic design tonight. Presenting, as I mentioned, the planning commission on November fifteenth. We are targeting to complete our plan check, which was our construction document set in January. Get out to bid in February and March. And to start construction in spring of twenty twenty-two. Really while we're going over the schedule is because one of the things that we are pushing the schedule for, and I know staff is pushing us to deliver, is the project on the budget. And so most importantly is time is money in construction and so time delays will cause escalation and increase project cost. So that's just one of the things we want to be very careful about. And so with that, I think we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dawn, for that presentation. It was really thorough. I really appreciate that. I don't know if council has questions at this point or if we want to have public comment first. Yeah, I don't see hands raised, so why don't we go straight to public comment and then we'll bring it back.
We have one hand raised. Now we have two. Our first speaker is Robert Hutchinson, followed by Christine Bowles. Robert, you may now unmute yourself.
Okay. Hello, can you hear him? Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you for that presentation. It's very nice. You're, you did a great job. Council is still forgetting something. You forgot to involve the public in this plan whatsoever, really. In this, in the description of this, this agenda item. It's, it says what, what you've done there not to, to talk to the public about this. I mean, we have two neighborhood meetings with the latest October thirteenth, just for the neighbors in the area, not for the general public. Previous city council meetings, well, that's not really for the public, but I mean, every other project. We've had mailers go out, we've had workshops for the public. Here and then we go on internal staff meetings, eight project meetings, nothing for the public. Technical meetings, nothing for the public. Two rounds, two rounds of meetings. Integrated design workshop, that's was for staff, not the public. So we've had no input in this. And so don't be surprised if, if people file a lawsuit to stop this whole thing because number one, the main document you're using to justify documents, I should say many documents you're using to justify this rebuild, total rebuild of civic center and city hall is these mold reports. That you say the building's too moldy, we have to do this. Well, none of your experts recommended tearing down the whole building and building a whole new civic center. They recommended replacing the roof and windows and remediating the mold, which still isn't done. So the building's sitting there after the storm leaking, getting worse. Which maybe you're hoping that'd get some black mold in there and they can have a real reason to tear it down, but you should fix the roof right away. You wouldn't leave your house like this leaking and moldy. And there's no reason, the estimate to fix the roof and the windows and remediate the mold, I believe, was about $200,000 at the end of last year. Say even if it's a million dollars, you're talking about spending $10 million here. Not to, not to make the building safer, because this was a common type of mold found, found outside. In fact, the numbers registered outside were equal to what they found in the women's bathroom in city hall. So it's not like it's that toxic. I mean, it's toxic to some people that are allergic to it, but not generally, and it can be remediated. It could have been cleaned. If we get mold in our house, we clean it. But you know, you guys, and I've informed all city council about general manager not responding to document requests illegally not responding, so you're aware of that too. That's it.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Our next hand is Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now mute yourself.
Good evening, council, and thank you, Dawn, for, for that report. I, I have a few questions. I, I guess I'm, I am really concerned about the budget. It's, I don't think I've ever seen a project continue this way where the budget is 10 million and we're at 11.73 and the design phase already seventeen percent over budget. That's, that's a big number that is very hard to cut with little things that you leave out and wait, you know, to do later on. I, I'd really be interested in seeing that breakdown. And I, I asked at the last meeting if some structural reports had been done yet and Dawn had mentioned that there were going to need to be some foundations replaced. So I'm just wondering if, if that structural and seismic analysis, because these buildings are so old. Has been done yet and that we really have a good handle on what the seismic upgrades are going to be because that could be a major additional cost and and obviously there's dry rot in both of the buildings, which we can't fully understand now. But just making sure that, you know, there aren't big surprises that are going to jump this up to fourteen or fifteen million before we're done. It's very easy for, for projects to, to scale up that way. And, and usually if you're on a tight budget of ten, you want to start with eight as your design goal and not twelve, knowing that you're going to have some overrun. So I'm, I'm just really concerned about the process and where we are. A few technical questions. I, I noticed looking at the city hall plans today that you know, the main entrance is handicapped accessible, but the, the front stairs are, are not and my understanding is that we need at least two required exits and both of those need to be handicapped accessible. So I'm just wondering if Dawn can comment on that. The renderings really seem misleading. They don't show the parking spaces in, in front of the buildings on the parking lot side. And so they, they look a lot more generous than, than they are. So just pointing that out and, and the space that's closest to the city hall building alongside or just next to the handicap parking space. Usually if you're, if you're driving down that aisle, you would pull up in front of the space and then back in. So I'm not even sure how someone would access that, that spot. Right behind the handicap spot. Just technically in terms of being able to go in. I, I know Dawn mentioned we were just losing a couple of parking spaces. And then I'm disappointed that the Salada lot is not in the budget either. I know the historical society is really looking to move the railcar as their lease is expiring. And so it would be really good to know what their options are. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. No more hands raised at this time.
Okay, then I'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for questions. And comments. If any. Councilmember O'Neil, Ben Vatterlas, did I see Big Sticks' hand go up? No? Okay, O'Neil, then Vatterlas, then Mayor Proten.
This is a, a comment when we had our meetings, you know, two at a time the past week. I would like that area in between the PBNR building and city hall. I would like to see that more of a conduit so that a, a Mac, like Half Moon Bay has the Mac Dutcher Park there where there's some bands, there's different activities, poetry readings, whatever, people just playing and checkers or whatever there. And I would like to see that area more useful. If we could get planters that, you know, could be wheeled out and made so it's like closed off if we wanted to have some sort of public, you know, event there. I'd also like it to see if we could do something for dining for the, I mean, there's three or four restaurants within a block there that they could be used for. We're going to have the, the stadium seating there. It'd be nice to have some sort of pad for like a thing there for people to congregate. And, but I would also like to see if it's possible to have some sort of outdoor dining area for some of the restaurants because we're going to be considering that later. And we would be minimizing the parking space, the loss on Francisco and and whatever, wherever else the parking space lost. I'm also concerned in that if the railcar, I'm all for the railroad car in that complex. But by putting it where it's presently being designed to be, you are dedicating that, that land, basically that lot will forever be there like that. It will never be able to be utilized for any other purposes. Because that is going to be the parking lot for the, the city hall and the railroad car. And I'm just concerned about that lot being forever the train station type of thing. So those are my two comments. Otherwise, I mean, I think it looks nice. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Vatterlas.
Could you clarify the current number of parking spaces versus the number of parking spaces that will be available? That doesn't include all the street parking. But just onsite parking spaces.
And do you want to go question by question, Dawn, or do you want to go all at once? What's best?
Uh, whatever you like.
Sue? What's your?
Go ahead. I mean, one thing at a time is fine. I don't care, but however you want to do it.
Right, we'll go question by question. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm getting the detail on the parking, but what we are doing for the parking is I believe there's fifty-five, fifty-five or fifty-seven spaces on site. And the total required for the city hall and the P and P building per your code is fifty. And so as we're improving this a lot a lot, we lose an additional five spaces there. So the total parking count is just at the fifty after the Salada lot is improved. But by closing the access off of Santa Maria into the lot, we're gaining street parking over there as well. And so it's very close to being net zero there, not quite, you know what I'm saying? We may be minusing three or four spaces total.
Okay, and, and it is being, you said this in your report, but the photovoltaic systems can be adapted on the P and P building at a later date, just not at this moment and not on the city hall building itself.
Right, and so the P and P building will be what is called PV ready. So the infrastructure will be included in the building. And you can either do purchase power agreement to lease the photovoltaics and put them on the roof. Or look at a grant opportunity at the future to get them. But yeah, they're not in the budget. We can carry them as an alternate, but the building is ready to receive them.
Okay, and Mike, there are, there is a seating area behind the little brown church where people could sit and eat back there. But not to mention the stadium seating. So there are available. Sorry, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proten.
Um, thank you, Dawn, for your presentation. Once again, maybe if you could address some of Christine's questions. One was the, the ADA accessible entrance and exit, and I think the stairs that she was talking about are actually not from the building, correct?
So I think the stairs she was talking about were the, is the formal entrance on Santa Maria, what I would say formal ceremonial. And that in the historical review analysis of the building is the most important facade of the building. And so that is pretty important that we try and retain that, seeing as we're trying to restore the building per the standards for the historical building restoration. The accessibility is, the, the thing is that with the city hall, we have less than fifty occupants. And so with less than fifty occupants, we only need to have one accessible exit. And we are meeting that. That's per the code. The other question she had is if you look at the site plan where we have the ADA parking space, the van accessible one that she said you couldn't get into, that's not actually a parking space. And so that is just, we're repeating the pattern, but that's not included in the count for our parking spaces. And it won't be striped for parking. And she also had a question on the structural. Should I keep going on that?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, so we've done structural investigations to confirm the depth of the existing foundations. We're improving the foundations that are impacted by the work and they're bringing, the work that we're doing will be brought up to current code. And these numbers and investigation and details and costs are currently reflected in the updated estimate that we've provided to you.
Okay, thank you so much. And then about this a lot a lot, so what will that look like moving forward? Like, will that be like a whole nother? But what will that look like going forward? I guess I'd love.
So what we've shown would be, you know, the master plan for improving that and to integrate it and tie it into the whole civic campus. That parking that is there on that lot is designated for the city hall parking. And so future uses would have to incorporate those parking spaces. And so if you were to put something else on that lot, you could. But you would probably, you know, you'd have to integrate the parking or replace it somewhere else for the civic center because that lot is designated for parking for civic center. And it's kind of part of the campus and we are counting it. It had been designated for that. You know, if you're to build over it, you could, you know, put parking on the ground level, additional parking up a layer or something if you wanted to put something on top of it. That's my understanding and I think Tina is perhaps available. If, if you needed additional.
And I, yeah, I was also thinking about the costs, right? And so it's part of the master plan, right? But not part of the budget. And so
That's correct.
Project.
Yes, it would have to be a whole nother budget and the design of it for us, it, the, it was only in our scope of work to take it to this level. So we're not doing construction documents on that either. And so it wouldn't at this point even be bid as an alternate. And so it wouldn't, at this point, even be bid as an alternate as part of our work. It's a separate scope.
All right, thank you so much.
You did. Okay. Councilmember Big Stick, you didn't have questions or comments at this time?
I briefly raised my hand, but my, my questions were addressed to my satisfaction. Although I, I wouldn't mind briefly echoing Mike's sentiment to accentuate the versatility. Allowed in the Pocket Park area. The more it can be a communal space, the better. I'd love to see music there. I'd love it to be friendlier for folks from like El Toro Loco across the street. Be able to find a good place to sit, have a bite, so. And what, whatever can be done to accentuate its potential, I favor that as well. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just wanted to double check on a couple of things, Don. About the pervious pavement. Versus. And so I'm looking at packet page one sixty and one sixty-one. I don't know if you have that in front of you. This is, it's the, the budgets from April, the projected budgets for conceptual design. For the April and the October dates. And I just wanted to make sure I understand that when we were giving feedback and talking about this in April. Pervious paving was one of the add-on concepts. But it looks like it's incorporated maybe into the plan now, or is that still an add-on? That's my first question. And then I also had a follow-on question about electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. Because I'm wondering, is there, are we at a place where there's some that are intended to be installed right away? And some for the future, or are we looking at needing to have a grant or something like that for all of it?
So for the electric vehicle charging stations. What is included is the infrastructure for the charging stations themselves. The charging stations themselves are currently not in the budget. And it's somewhat intentional on that because PCE actually gives quite a few grants out to give those to cities. And a lot of our clients are approaching the charging stations in this manner. Since grants, you know, cities like Palo Alto have gotten grants as well as Burlingame. So they are available, and so for us to budget your money and take that away from something else that is potentially. Not available through a grant has been the strategy that we're working out with. Staff on that.
What, that's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure I understood. Because I did see a very variance in the amount of money in each of those two budgets.
Yeah, the pervious paving, I, I do not believe we've included the pervious paving in the base. But what we have done, as you can see from the site plan, is replaced tremendous amount of impervious site area with landscaping. Create a lot more green. It is something we could add back in as an alternate. Because we, we can replace the regular paving with pervious paving if you so desire. And carry that as an alternate. That is not challenging for us. But it's not something you could come and do at a later date either. So that was kind of one of the things we're looking at with our alternates. Is if you had to phase them in over time as a future budget item, you would not do that with the pervious paving, so.
I see. Okay. And so in terms of, you know, stormwater and rain and all of that.
But we are able, so we, we are, we are, we have the detention basins on the site. We have much more impervious area on the site now than there was before. Just by taking the PD down, those driveways between the buildings from Santa Maria, the PNP. And, you know, we are able to do the detention and the treatment on the site. That has not been a challenge for us, so. It would be lovely to have pervious paving. We, you know, we would all love to use pervious paving, but it is more expensive.
Understood. Okay, those were my questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, my understanding is that this is an accept, receive the presentation item. And thank you for that. And if there are no further questions from council, I think we will move on to item ten. Councilmembers?
Was there any other information you needed from us tonight, though? I know you asked for comments and things, so did you get those?
Yeah, I think Councilmember O'Neill and Councilmember Big Stick. Goal for activating our green parklet and providing support spaces. Absolutely, as we move forward, we can look at additional ways to do that. If there was no other comments and everyone is satisfied with the exterior of the building. I think that was kind of the critical thing for us as we go to the Planning Commission November fifteenth.
Well, then I'm just gonna wrap up by saying I'm more than satisfied by the exterior and the entire look of this project. I think it is terrific. And I think the, the, I mean, I, I work at an elementary school, so reduce, reuse, recycle, repurpose. Are words we use a lot at school. And, and I realize that, you know, there are pros and cons to that. But I'm really grateful to you and your team for the work and effort that you put into. Really embracing our historic building. And recognizing and incorporating that into that, the whole Civic Center plan. So I think it just strikes such a nice balance between fresh and new and modern and historic. And it's really going to be one of those things that when it's done, we're gonna go, wow, how did we ever not have this? Quite like the library project someday, Councilmember Big Stick. And everyone. All right.
Later.
So with, with that, well, thank you again.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Don.
Thank you, Don.
If it's okay with you, I'd like to propose a five-minute break before we move on to item ten. So that would be eight fifty-seven. Let's come back at nine oh three, nine oh four or so. Thank you. When we all back. Great. All right, we're moving on to item ten. And the recommended action is to approve the wastewater collection system master plan twenty twenty-one updates. We have staff contacts Louis Sun and our Deputy Director of Public Works for Wastewater. And our Director of Public Works Lisa Peterson. And our collections manager, manager Brian Martinez is on hand. In addition to Senior Engineer Wastewater Nelson Schleter. We also have consultants from Woodward, Woodward, Woodard, Curran, Disa and Chris. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Great, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Proton and City Council members. Louis Sun, Deputy Director of Public Works, Wastewater. The item before you tonight are the approval of the wastewater collection system master plan update. This wastewater collection system master plan was first completed in October two thousand and eleven. And it was required because of a cease and desist order and, and a consent decree issued to the city earlier in two thousand and eleven. This master plan is intended to be a working document to be refined and updated. As additional data and new planning information becomes available. After the completion of several sewer infrastructure improvement projects. And as the city completed all the cease and desist order requirements. It was considered prudent to reevaluate the wastewater collection system and update the master plan. Which will provide data and information to assist the planning of the future capital improvement program. And better allocate, better allocation of resources. In addition, the city has also undertaken several assessment to address sea, sea level rise and climate change topics. And this update will help assess the challenges from sea level rise. And the impact of climate change on the city sewer infrastructure. Tonight, we have a short presentation which will provide additional details. Including the background and the findings of the wastewater collection system master plan update. And with this, I would also like to introduce two members of our consulting team. Miss Kisa Ju and Mr. Chris Van Landon from Woodard and Curran to do the presentation.
All right.
Thank you, Louis. I appreciate that. I do wanna say also on behalf of my colleagues at Woodard and Curran that we've really enjoyed working with Louis on this project as well as other projects for the city. And we will miss him too, as I know, I've heard from, from all of you that you will also. But we're lucky in that we work with many cities and agencies, and hopefully we will be able to work with him at Foster City also. As, as Louis mentioned, this, this master plan update really originated in, in two thousand and eleven. With the cease and desist order and the consent decree that were issued. To the city at that time. And those, those documents required the city to update their sewer system management plan. Which includes plans and programs to address the collection system condition, capacity, as well as operations. Sewer system management plans are actually required under state, state regulations, under the statewide general discharge. Waste discharge requirements for all sanitary sewer systems. But in, but specifically for, for Pacifica, there were a number of specific requirements. That had to be met for the CDO and the, and the consent decree. One of the documents that were developed to fulfill those requirements was the collection system master plan of two thousand and eleven. And out of that came a number of improvements, including the wet weather equalization basin project that we've talked a lot about tonight. And by two thousand and nineteen, the city had substantially fulfilled all the requirements of those. Of the CD and the, and the CDO. So as Louis mentioned, this is now a good time to update the master plan to reflect the improvements that the city has made. And identify any, you know, additional needs for the sewer system. Next slide. Just to summarize what came out of the two thousand and eleven master plan. Those recommendations were to develop a long-term plan for sewer main rehabilitation and replacement. We call that R and R. And since two thousand and eleven, the city has completed about sixty thousand feet of sewer main rehabilitation and replacement. The second major recommendation was to upsize a number of sewer mains throughout the city that needed additional capacity. And there were, I think, fourteen projects identified, twelve of those have already been completed. And then finally, the construction of the Lindemar Wet Weather Equalization Basin, which was completed in two thousand and twenty. And has clearly been put to good use this past weekend. Next slide. The overall objectives of this master plan update that we undertook on the last year or two. Was to try to quantify the reductions in infiltration and inflow that have been achieved. By the rehab and replacement projects that the city has completed since two thousand and eleven. To identify any additional capacity deficiencies in the system. Under a, a ten-year design storm peak wet weather flow. And I do wanna add the, the ten-year design storm peak wet weather flow is a fairly standard criteria for sizing sewer system facilities throughout California. And it was written, actually written into the consent decree. So the facilities, including the equalization basin that we have. Identified in these master plans are based on providing capacity for that type of storm event. And finally, of course, to develop projects and any recommendations to address any deficiencies that we, that we identify. That are still existing in the system. Next slide. So to undertake the, these objectives, we went through a number of activities. First and foremost was a flow monitoring program conducted during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty wet weather season. We installed twenty-one meters throughout the collection system for a period of two months to collect. Wet weather data as well as some dry weather data, since it didn't rain for two months straight, thank goodness. We use that information to update and calibrate a computerized hydraulic model. That had originally been developed in, in the two thousand and eleven master plan. It's a, a model of the sewer system that allows us to see how the system performs under a hypothetical ten-year storm. Which we obviously were not able to capture in, in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty season. We also incorporated the, the most current projections of future development throughout the city. And then we used the, the model to analyze the flows and identify any, any remaining or new capacity deficiencies and any needed improvements. And, and as Louis mentioned, while, while this master plan did not specifically. Develop information about sea level rise. It did take into consideration the studies that have already been done by the city and other, other organizations. And we summarized those efforts in the master plan report. And, and identified where they could, sea level rise could potentially impact the sewer system in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Chris to talk about the findings and recommendations of the study.
Thank you, Gisa. So as Gisa mentioned, one of the goals of this study was really to understand. How much of a reduction in INI inflow and infiltration volume occurred as a result of all of the rehab activities that the city has undergone. And overall, we see about a fifteen percent reduction in wet weather volume since the two thousand and eleven master plan. That is significant, but it's part, it's particularly focused around areas that have been rehabilitated. For example, the Pedro Point area, which has undergone kind of a comprehensive rehabilitation. There's been about a forty to fifty percent reduction.
Chris, I wanted to ask you, this, this slide has a lot of R and R, L and L, PWF. Could you please spell out what those are, because this is a public meeting for the general public?
Certainly.
Be able to understand. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the, the first one, the first acronym, two thousand and eleven MP, that's master plan. The second bullet is the city's R and R program, so that's the rehabilitation and rehab and repair program. And it has been effective at reducing INI, which is inflow and infiltration. So inflow and infiltration are the major components of the wet weather flow. When, when it gets into the sewer system. Inflow is the direct, is kind of direct connection into the sewer system. Whereas infiltration is where the water seeps through the soil and then enters the, enters the sewer system. So we did still see some significant amount of INI in the system overall. Particularly, we noticed it in areas that we suspect have a lot of orangeberg laterals. And orangeberg laterals are, orangeberg is a type of material that was used in the seventies and earlier. That's particularly prone to defects and, and becoming sources of, of INI. So after, after running this model and, and updating, calibrate, recalibrating it. We ran the model with a ten-year, twenty-four-hour design storm. And we did identify still four locations of capacity deficiencies. In the gravity sewers under the design storm peak wet weather flow condition. That's the TPWWF acronym. However, none of the pump stations were identified as capable. However, none of the pump stations were identified as capacity deficiencies. We can go to the next slide. So these are the four capacity deficiencies we did identify. The first one is actually part of, or includes the sewers that are planned for an upcoming rehab and rehabilitation project. And so as part of that project, the recommendation would simply be to upsize some of those sewers. The remaining three projects, there is some uncertainty in the flow that that is going through, and one of them is downstream of the R and R program that is planned. So the city may consider doing some supplemental and targeted flow monitoring to kind of confirm the need of these projects. Go ahead to the next slide. Other recommendations for the master plan, from master plan. So continuing sewer inspection and condition assessment programs to identify sewers in poor condition. This would help to alleviate some of the INI concerns and continue addressing INI through sewer rehabilitation programs and projects. There's also, this project, this master plan was focused on capacity. So the city should continue to move forward with previously identified other CIP projects, such as rerouting the 12-inch sewer main under the RV park. The city should also continue to replace and update and manage the pump station electrical systems and mechanical systems to maintain system reliability. And then going forward, the city should continue to update the model and the master plan every five to 10 years or as things change. Go ahead to the next slide. So this master plan also reviewed the, some of the assessments that the city has done on climate change and specifically sea level rise impacts and summarized those risks for the sewer collection system. And that's summarized in the table below. You can go ahead to the next slide, though, I'll summarize it a little better. One thing to keep in mind when looking at these numbers is that this is looking at a worst-case scenario and it's looking at your 2100 sea level rise condition. And it's assuming no adaptation strategies are employed and does not take into account any existing or future coastal armoring that the city makes construct. Given those caveats, there's about 7% of the city's gravity sewers and about a third of the city's forest mains are potentially exposed to risks associated with coastal erosion and flooding due to climate change and sea level rise. Four of the city's pump stations would be potentially impacted as well. But one thing to note is that the city's Clara Creek Water Recycling Plant is located outside of the extensive coastal flooding and erosion and therefore isn't projected to be impacted by the effects of sea level rise at this time. I can go to the next slide. So recommendations as part of this. So there is the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, and the city should move forward with that to continue to protect their wastewater infrastructure as well as support other projects to address future sea level rise. And the Public Works Division should be involved and assist any city-led efforts to plan and protect the wastewater infrastructure, such as the PBRP, the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. Doing this is a cost-effective way to protect the city's sewer infrastructure and can help deal with the uncertainty that is associated with the sea level rise. But keep in mind that these, all of these projections are do, are associated with 100-year, 2100, with your 2100 sea level rise. There aren't any immediate concerns with respect to sea level rise impacts. I believe that's the last slide I have.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Kisa. So council, we are now available to answer any questions.
I see council member O'Neil's hand up. If other council members have immediate questions and want to raise your hand, let me know. And then I know we will have public comment on this as well. Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to ask is to, okay, by force main, you mean pump stations? And by gravity flow, obviously, it flows down the pipe. When you were doing these considerations, did you look at or was it taken into consideration some of the legislation that, you know, the subdivision of lots, which a Lindemar rancher might turn in from one house into four different units? And therefore, there'd be more growth of a population. Was that factored into the capacity? And would it be prudent that if we're replacing a line, making it six, going to eight, maybe go to 10 or 12 inch? I'm just curious. Was that thought about?
Yes, council member. O'Neil, when we were conducting this study, we provided that information, you know, planning information to Woodon Current. And I believe Kisa can also explain a little bit more in terms of how they use that information in terms of putting in that data into our model and create, you know, create the model and create the projections.
Yeah, we closely coordinated with the planning department where they've identified specific developments that are known or likely with those were incorporated into our model, as well as, you know, vacant land, potentially vacant land that could be redeveloped or developed in the future. Most, you know, as I said, the assumptions we used in the model with respect to future development was based on information from the city's planning staff.
Okay, so obviously, I doubt every Lindemar rancher would ever convert to four units. But did you have a figure of 10% might do that or 15? Or was there a percentage used to calculate that additional pipe that needed to be built or used or capacity? Because I know part of our capacity increase is that the pipelines are being made bigger from whatever, six to eight inch or eight inch to 10 inch, whatever it is. And that increased capacity so that for the equalization basin also, right? And I remember that from a previous meeting.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know that we specifically identified areas that could, you know, could have lot splits. Chris, I don't know if you recall anything like that. But a couple of comments about this. One is that the master plan and the model are intended to be, you know, as Louis mentioned, a living document. So the models are intended to be updated whenever there is new information. And we hope the city will continue to do that. The other thing is the capacity of the system is largely driven by peak wet weather flow. And the addition of some, you know, some new development is not likely to have that much impact on the sizing of the pipes. It's primarily the wet weather, the wet weather flows and the peak flows.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other immediate questions or shall we go to public comment? Yeah, public comment? Okay.
Yeah, away.
Okay, Mr. Montemeyer?
There are no hands. I've seen one hand raised now from Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now be here, so.
Thank you, sorry. I'm trying to pull my notes back up because I didn't have a chance to print them. First of all, I'd like to understand in layman's terms a little bit more about how sewer pipes can have this much water infiltration during storms. Besides orangeberg lines, are there really cracks or other joint or alignment issues? According to the report, the overall design capacity is based on rain amounts of 3.74 inches in 24 hours. And we had 6.7 yesterday, just to remind you. So, you know, again, as we've talked before, everyone's calling this a 100-year event, but we've had at least five 100-year events in the last 40 years. And so I'm just not sure something's right with our math. I want to make sure that we're really using the right numbers so that we, you know, don't end up with more sewage stalls in the ocean, which is what led to this million-dollar fine and the $24 million equalization basin. I mean, are we even subject to fines for what happened yesterday? That, you know, the beaches have to be closed. I'm just really curious about that. In terms of growth and development, the report actually says that the REDA numbers were not considered. And so I hear you saying you've been talking to the planning department, but that's a pretty major addition of new homes that were asked to build on those 1900 in the next eight years. And then I saw your plans for where development is planned, but as Mike made a really good point, that none of that included redevelopment and increased density in existing residential lots. So I think that that part is missing too. And as a side note to that, I talked to a neighbor down on Monterey this morning who had just moved in and had some disclosure documents given to her when she bought her house. And apparently, the sewage replacement on Monterey Road was due to actually sewage overflow onto the street flowing down. I can't remember if it was 10 or 15 years ago. And that was due to apartment or condos being built up the street when the sewage lines were not upgraded to allow for them. So it is a real issue. And I know the report is recommending enlarged pipes in, I think, four different areas right now as immediate projects. But we really do need to understand if there's increased developments going in those areas so that we're not paying to replace them and then paying again in the next eight years to replace them because they're not meeting our capacity. So I appreciate that this is a draft document, but it's really a moving, a draft document with a lot of moving parts. And you're relying on armoring for infrastructure on the coast, and that is very uncertain. I just want to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Mayor, there's no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for further questions or comments. Councilmember Vaudelas.
Since a lot of the issues are due to the orangeberg pipes and cracked sewer laterals, are there any plans to do any additional street-by-street correction of sewer laterals, such as like what's done on Balboa and Peralta?
Yes, councilmember Vaudelas, as we plan out the CIP project in large chunk of areas, typically, we would include options for residents to take advantage of the project and they can, at that time, replace their sewer laterals. We typically work this into our contract, construction contract, and allow the contractor to provide a bid item for residents to replace the sewer lateral. We did this during our Pedro Point project, and it was very successful. A lot of residents took advantage of that. And this is something we'll continue to do to improve the sewer laterals throughout the city.
Thank you.
Is there anything further on this item from council?
I think maybe I just have a comment that I appreciate it and I also appreciate the fact that it's going to be worked on continuously as things change. I think that part's really important for not only for me to understand, but for our community to understand that as new information comes in, we'll be able to change and amend the report. Just the thought of the four pump stations not being protected, that's like almost too much for me to think about right now, but that's like scary. And I know it's like in 100 years or something like that. But these things just have to be like talked about, you know? So thank you for your report. And Louis, gonna miss you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mary, for mentioning that. I was thinking the same thing about the four pump stations, and I was wondering if it's possible for you to rank them or in some way quantify or give council members a refresher and the public maybe a refresher or a first time on those four and their locations, because you did mention all four are potentially at risk with sea level rise over a long term.
Sure, Mayor Beckmeyer. So the four pump stations that we're referring to are the Lindemar Pump Station, the Sharp Park Pump Station, the Rockaway Pump Station, and also the Brighton or the Davis Pump Station. So those are the four. And if we were to rank those four, obviously Lindemar would be number one, followed by Sharp Park is number two. But Rockaway Beach is also at risk. And not only from, you know, coastal erosion, but just the pump station is very old. And we do have plans to renovate that pump station in the near future. And lastly, Brighton and the Davis Pump Station, that would be ranked number four.
Okay. And we would be hearing about those updates. Is that an annual update for us as part of our capital improvement program? Or is that brought to us individually, such as tonight's presentation?
We, I suspect that we probably will be bringing more updates, you know, as we work on the CIP projects and also the sewer master plan that was recommended for every five to 10 years. So, but aside from the master plan update, I'm sure that Director Peterson will be bringing in more updates in the future as we work on our CIP projects.
Thank you, Louis. Did you want to make any comments on that, Lisa? I'm wondering about the timing and going forward and what you anticipate would be the next update on this plan after the current one.
Sure. So I think we're talking about two things. So one is the actual master plan updates. And as we just discussed, you know, during this presentation, it's a living document. The recommendation was to update it every five to 10 years. And certainly, I think just because of how dynamic our environment is here in Pacifica and also just different changes in laws that, you know, council member O'Neil brought up and was, some concern was expressed from council. We'd be looking at doing an update on this document, you know, every five years. And we'd be able to really roll in a lot of, you know, new information as it's coming in within that time period then into the document. Now regarding the specific projects that are moving forward during, in our CIP, we are currently in the process of working on some of those. And those are going to be brought to you as we get to points where, you know, we're going to give updates to the council when we're taking those out to bid. We are also going to be coming back to the council to get approvals of those agreements. You're going to know the specifics about, you know, what the work that's going to be done. So it's really both, right? You're going to get the update on the large master plan document and then updates on the individual CIP projects as those move forward.
Thank you for that. And I do appreciate that the specificity of the presentations that you provide and the linking of them each time you bring them to us and referencing back to these plans. I think it really goes to the opportunity, obviously, for council members, but also for the public to know more and to have time and opportunity to ask questions as they do. So thank you very much for all of that.
Sure.
I just actually kind of wanted to comment on, kind of off of what Councilwoman Beer said, is the biggest challenge with the sea level rise is the cost it would be to move those pump stations. Because you have to figure all those pipes are geared and built to flow to that pump station to get pushed. So you would actually need to start, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, the, start ripping up the streets and replacing those pipes and redesigning the whole gravity flow and everything else to get the, to replace those pump stations. So that gets us into the, why we need to do the Espinade and the Beach Boulevard project to protect those pump stations is the, the cost of redoing those citywide would be horrendous. I mean, I don't know. I have no idea how much, but it's just a comment, that's all.
And Brian, thank you for being here. I want to give you a chance if you have any comments or anything you want to say tonight.
Nothing really to say, just here if there was any specific historical stuff that came up. But thank you for acknowledging me. Appreciate being here. Nice seeing you.
All right. Oh, uh, Assistant City Manager Warmeister.
Hi, thank you for interrupting the conversation. Um, I thought it was just important to, to point out regarding some of the, uh, future development projections is that, uh, what planning does is we provide the best information we have at the time. And indeed, Rena is actually technically, we don't anticipate Arena to change, but it's still in the appeals process technically. So, you know, to, to prepare this type of document, we have to go with what is, is known as final kind of factual information at the time. And, uh, also of course SB nine was, I think is what, uh, Councilmember O'Neil was alluding to, was just very recently signed by the governor. And so, um, this document as well as other, um, you know, CIP documents that other agencies may produce, these are five-year, typically five-year documents. The Rena actually goes into effect at the beginning of twenty twenty-three. I know that's just around the corner, but that'll already be, you know, what, a year, a year and a half, maybe two years into this document. So I think that, um, I appreciate that it is a living document and we need to update it as information is known and becomes available. And, um, again, you know, the Rena numbers, they're, they're important, but they're not final final yet. Um, and so that is, you know, why you may see, um, not that we are not anticipating it or we are not aware of it, but it may not be acknowledged yet in this document.
I was thinking when Councilmember O'Neil brought up about SB nine, I'm also thinking about our ADU ordinances, you know, ours that we had already passed before the state had increased the requirements of, on theirs. And then we met that. Um, and I think for our consultants as well as of planning staff, is there, uh, is it for something like SB nine, would there be a multiplier? Kind of as Councilmember O'Neil was asking, some kind of a factor that you would use and, uh, build a model around how many of the single-family units might be, lot splits might be increased? Is there, how does that work exactly?
Well, we can certainly, you know, put something like that in the model, um, you know, but we do look towards, we do look to the planning people to provide guidance on what assumptions we should make. We're, we're the engineers. We're not, we're not making planning decisions. So, but we can, we have a lot of flexibility to how we, how we update the model to incorporate those types of, of, um, potential changes.
And I would imagine Tina, that's just evolving right now, right? The benchmarks for that, I mean, there aren't benchmarks, the projections for that, um, having it just having been signed into law.
Right. I think folks are still in analyzing how to interpret the law right now. Um, certainly, once we have more certainty there, we could do exercises, um, looking at the parameters that SB nine provides. You have to meet certain parameters in order to take advantage of it. And then you could apply it to the lots in Pacifica and then which ones could potentially even qualify. And then from there, you'd have to, um, maybe by then you'd have some baseline information as to how many actually choose, even if they do qualify to do something like this. We, we've seen some, uh, preliminary economic studies, which are showing that single-family homes are still the highest and best used in San Mateo County it appears. And so it's still too early to be, to, to predict how many folks will want to take advantage of SB nine.
Great. All right. Well, if there are no further comments, oh, wait.
Hey, I have one something, one thing to add to that.
Oh, please.
You know, a- as new information becomes available, or say, uh, uh, say a neighbor had had to be looked at and we really thought everyone was gonna turn one into two units or three or four. You don't necessarily have to do the entire study. Um, you can add those things to the model pretty easily because they already have our system there. And, and we do that with potential developments, um, through developers, through the city with water drain. And, and that's not a very expensive thing to do. So that, that can be done as new things come up real easily.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. And Sue, Butterlos.
Um, I did read a study recently that, um, they think that ninety-eight percent of single families are going to stay single family, even though this law passed, um, because people don't either have the wherewithal, the space, they don't want to do it. Um, so they think that in suburbs especially, the single-family, um, housing is going to remain. Um, I also wanted to say something about the hundred-year storm. So I looked up and the wettest, San Francisco only reported four point oh-two inches. And that is the fourth wettest storm since the gold rush. Um, before that, there was a five-inch in nineteen ninety-four. But so these hundred-year events, I'm not sure where that comes from, that people call them hundred-year storms. But as far as water, um, I had to look up the water because that was the most important thing to us, was water. And of course, I can only get statistics from San Francisco, not from Pacifica's rainfall for the past since the gold rush. So it is kind of, it was a heavy-duty storm for sure. Thank you. So the things are different when there's that much excessive water.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil.
Um, I was just having a thought and it's kind of off topic, but if we are installing water lines down streets and everything, is there any thought to processing and putting in purple pipe or blue pipe, whatever, for recycling to certain major water uses such as Sanchez Field, you know, Athletic Field or Onstad if we're, you know, just putting joint pipes down there so that we can actually start a recycling program for water? You know, if you dig the street up once, just dig it up and put two pipes down at once. Is there any thoughts of that or any ideas to funding or anything like that?
Staff?
Um, I, I can comment on that, Mike. Um, usually ninety-five percent of our sewer replacement is done trenchlessly using the pipe bursting method because we're usually upsizing, like you said earlier, six to eight, eight to ten. Um, so we're not doing trenching. The other issue is, uh, you can't have utilities in joint trenches. There needs to be separation. Um, the water department has a policy of ten-foot separation. So, um, you really couldn't joint trench those. I mean, it does make sense to, um, when you're going to be doing major paving projects to look at infrastructure, of course, and do all of the infrastructure replacement at the same time. But trying to make, um, recycle water projects and sewer replacements work hand in hand, I, I really don't see any savings because of the method we're using for replacement.
Okay. I will yield to you. You are the professional and know more about that than I do. So, thank you, Brian.
Thanks so much for all the education and information tonight. It's really helpful. Okay, council members, um, we need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the wastewater collection system master plan twenty twenty-one update.
Second.
With the motion by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Butterlos for item number ten, I'll start with the roll call vote, uh, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item ten passes unanimously.
And we move right into item eleven.
Good everyone. Wait, Louis has his hand now.
Oh, Louis. Sorry. Where are we?
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer. Um, if I may, I just wanted to thank the city council for your support over the years. Um, I got emotional after hearing the outpour support from council earlier. Um, and thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Public Works Department, our success is because of your support. And then we have a great group of staff and great leadership, um, you know, from Director Peterson and Deputy Director Baltista. Uh, I'm gonna miss Pacifica and all the friendship here. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And you know, you're welcome anytime. And, and you're just right over the hill. It's very close. So please.
Yeah, you're super special, Louis. Congratulations on your new position.
So happy for you on that.
Hey, let's not forget he's still a resident as well, so.
You're right. He can just duck down that road.
He's a homeowner, so he might be on the other side of the council meetings.
Oh, no.
I promise you I will not be disrupted.
All right, you guys. Good night.
So much. And thank you to our consultants from Waterd and Current.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you.
All right, council members. We have one remaining item, which is item eleven. And it is the appointments to the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Our staff contact on this is City Clerk Sarah Coffey.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, tonight I'm bringing, um, the staff report, uh, for the purpose of appointments to the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission and the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Uh, we have recruited for applicants for five positions on the Economic Development Committee, um, for one partial term to expire October twenty twenty-three, for another partial term that will expire in October twenty twenty-four, and for three full four-year term positions to expire in October twenty twenty-five. And for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, we recruited for three, uh, positions, uh, for expiring terms. And that would be to fill for three full four-year terms to expire in October twenty twenty-five. So three full terms. For the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, we were recruiting for one position to fill a term that, uh, had expired in May, uh, for a one full four-year term to expire in May twenty twenty-five. The opportunities were published in the Pacifica Tribune several times and on the city's website and the city's Connect with Pacifica e-newsletter and on the city's social media channels next door and Facebook. Uh, we had to extend, um, the, uh, deadline, um, to recruit additional applicants. And, uh, upon the conclusion of the extended, uh, deadline, we had received six timely applications for Economic Development Committee, five timely applications for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and three timely applications for the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Uh, one applicant who had indicated interest in all three of those committees, commissions that we were recruiting for subsequently withdrew their application. So that left five, um, applicants for EDC, four applicants for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and two applicants for the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. Interviews were held, uh, for those, uh, applicants on Monday, October eighteenth. And, um, with that, um, the city council, um, is here to decide which applicant to appoint to those positions. And I would need a, a named applicant for each position, um, uh, and, um, indicate the, uh, the term to which you are appointing them if there's a, a difference in the terms. So some of, so EDC, for example, has a couple of short-term positions. So we'd need to know who is being appointed, um, to which positions. And I now invite, uh, council member, um, questions. And then we'll have public comment and deliberation.
Just for a process question, for EDC, could we have our nomination be like for the one-year term? Not like all five? You know what I mean? So.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was just, I think it'd be easier for us, that's all.
Okay, other questions? All right. Um, I'm not sure how to proceed in terms of our deliberations because we shouldn't really probably deliberate until we have public comment. So unless there are any comments or questions generally that people want to make, I think we should go straight to public comment. Okay, Mr. Montemeyer.
And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Council members.
I'll start. I'll nominate Daisy Fong to the EDC one, uh, short-term, shortest-term position.
Yes.
I'll second that.
So the, so just to get clarity, that's to the partial term to expire in October twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Yes.
So, uh, City Clerk, do you want to vote on that one and then go to the next one?
Sure, we can. There's a motion and a second for that one. So, uh, we can go ahead and do the vote. Um, this is for Daisy Fong for the partial term to expire October twenty twenty-three. Moved by Butterlos and seconded by O'Neil. Uh, roll call vote starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And, uh, Daisy Fong is appointed to the partial term expiring in October twenty twenty-three by unanimous vote.
All right. I don't see any hands at this moment, so I will go ahead and make a motion on the same, um, commission or committee to, uh, nominate Greta Seeglock for one of the four-year terms to expire October twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
And, uh, would you, would you like to make motions on the other terms for the full four-year terms?
At this point, City, Madam City Clerk, we can, we need to vote on this motion.
Okay. So the motion to, uh, appoint Greta Seeglock for a full four-year term to expire October twenty twenty-five was moved by Mayor Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. A roll call vote starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And Greta Seeglock is appointed to the term expiring October twenty twenty-five by unanimous vote.
Um, I'd like to make a nomination for Robert Foster for the last four-year term and start expiring October twenty twenty-five and Debbie Herschlag for the partial term to expire October twenty twenty-four.
Um, I'm gonna have a point of clarification before we have a second on that. And to my understanding, we have three full four-year terms for this particular appointment. So that would not be the.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, then I'll do, uh, Debbie Herschlag for the four-year term to October twenty twenty-five and then my motion.
So your motion is to, uh, appoint Robert Foster to one of the four-year terms and Debbie Herschlag to the other?
Yes.
Second.
And, uh, motion to appoint Robert Foster and Debbie Herschlag to the four-year terms to expire twenty twenty-five, moved by Councilmember O'Neil and seconded by Councilmember Butterlos. Call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes, uh, unanimously.
So my understanding then is we have a one partial term, October twenty twenty-four, that's unfilled, correct?
Uh, correct. And we have a one remaining candidate that potentially could fill that position, as I understand it.
Correct.
Right. Uh, the only point I would bring up is last time we had appointments for, um, you know, commissions, we had an individual didn't come to the meeting and we didn't, and we left a spot open because nobody really knew the person or whatever. So I don't know if that's, I want to become a practice or, uh, just like my other council members' thoughts is what I'm asking about.
Sure. And before we share thoughts on that, could I ask City Clerk Coffey to refresh my memory about Mr. Humon's, um, request and statement and, uh, reason for not being able to come? Human's request and statement and reason for not being able to come to the interview?
Yes, he was unable to attend the interview on October eighteenth due to travel plan, pre-arranged travel arrangements for that date. And it was a rather short notice for the, for the interview date. And because it does involve a special city council convening, a special city council meeting to hold the interviews, we cannot accommodate changes to that schedule.
And do you recall if Mr. Human requested that we do consider his application on a paper screen?
He did reiterate his interest in the position. But he did not submit written answers to the interview questions. He did submit a full application.
Council members, Councilmember O'Neal asked for a discussion. Councilmember Batterloss?
The person who we did not appoint last time, even though we had a position, did not say they weren't coming to the interview. They just didn't show up. There's, I think there's a difference. It's like an excused absence and an unexcused absence. So.
Councilmember Big Stick?
I don't view it as penalizing the person since they weren't there, merely that I didn't have the opportunity to get to know them. So I'd actually favor holding the spot for another round of interviews so that we have the opportunity to get to know the person we're appointing through no particular fault of Mr. Human. But I would favor getting to know the appointee.
And I, I think it was a little difficult to get people this time to to apply. And so I'm thinking maybe we should fill the spot. But that's just my, my opinion.
It is a short term, so, you know, whatever, you know, whatever. So I could, all right, I'll make it a motion, and if it passes, it passes. I nominate Nicholas Human for the partial term to expire October twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
And a motion by Councilmember O'Neal to appoint Nicholas Human to the partial term to expire October twenty twenty-four, seconded by Councilmember Batterloss. Call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Batterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer. Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And Nicholas Human is appointed unanimously to the partial term to expire October twenty twenty-four on the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, let's move on. If we're going to go in order, the next one in our packet is the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. Are you comfortable with moving on to that one, council members?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have three full four-year terms to expire October twenty twenty-five.
Go ahead, Mary, you're.
I will nominate Felix Gesanian. I hope I said his last name right, for one of the full terms.
A second.
And then maybe we can, should we just, can we vote as a slate or?
Now there's a, now that, I'm sorry, but there's a motion and a second, so we have to vote on that. But the next motion could definitely be a slate.
Awesome.
Okay, we can't amend the motion. The maker of the motion can't amend.
Actually, that's a great suggestion. The maker of the motion could have, could withdraw their motion and make it a new motion.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
And does the seconder?
I agree. I withdraw my second. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to make a new motion?
I'll make a new motion. So that means I have to make the motion for all three?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, I will, I will make a motion for Felix Gesanian for one of the full terms. Someone else?
You have to make, I can't, I can't amend your motion.
I have to make, okay. And Jay Crawford and Jean Salisbury.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember O'Neal to appoint Felix Gesanian, Jay Crawford, and Jean Salisbury to the full four-year terms for Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. A roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Batterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And unanimous passage of appointing Gesanian, Crawford, and Salisbury to Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission for full terms.
Thank you. And our third appointment tonight is for the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. We have one seat, one full four-year term to expire May twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion or a discussion?
Make a motion to appoint, oh, I'm sorry, Tiger had his hand up.
I didn't see that. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Big Stick.
I move to appoint Naomi Stern to the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission.
I'm not hearing a second. Is there a second to that motion?
I don't think so. I would make a motion to appoint Carl Nicolari, Nico, Nico Lari.
I'll second.
And the motion to appoint Carl Nicolari to Park Speeches and Recreation Commission by O'Neal and seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer. Start with the roll call vote, starting with Council, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Batterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And appointing Carl Nicolari to PBR Commission passes unanimously.
Thank you, council members.
I just wanted to say that, you know, if you didn't get chosen this time around, please apply again because the seats come up over and over and over again. So please, please come back. We really appreciate you coming out and applying.
Thank you to all of the applicants and to our new future county committee and commission members. And we have no further business before us this evening, so I will adjourn the meeting at ten oh three PM.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.